Call this meeting to order, we begin with a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the meeting of April 8th, 2013. With that, roll call.
Cleary?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Semansky?
Here.
Caperos?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Whaling?
Here.
In your packets, you have two sets of minutes from March 11th, 2013, and also the workshop of the 25th, 2013. Any additions, corrections? If none, motions in order to approve.
No move.
Say.
Questions? None, roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
The village clerk's report.
The only thing I have is tax income received since the last meeting, so those $125,559 and 27 cents.
Any questions, old clerk? Okay, we'll go to a state of the village address, which is required by state statute. We'll keep this very brief, we have a basketball game this evening at 8:30, so we hope to be out of here happily. Good time. First of all, I want to congratulate the village board, staff members, for this past year's performance. We did produce a balanced budget for the future. You've watched your spending, done an excellent job, and I applaud you for that. Like I said, the future is bright for the village of Beecher financially, if we watch ourselves. Spending, watch our income trends, and don't get in the trick bag like maybe our state or our US government. Don't spend more on what you got coming in. I see nothing but a bright future if we plan. I think if you look back, I looked back 28 years ago, I think the village boards did an excellent job in planning, putting up a wastewater treatment plant that accommodated all this new growth that we've had in the last 10, 12 years. Without that, half the people wouldn't be here. We'd still be a 2,000 population. We produced three wells since that time, we had abandoned the old wells, we've got adequate water supply. Without your infrastructure, you will see no commercial, industrial, or residential development coming. Infrastructure is the key to any growth issues, so future boards, keep that in mind. Infrastructure is the key. When a developer comes in, that's the first thing he asks, what's your capacity as far as water and wastewater? Two big key elements, without that, you don't get it, so. Again, I applaud everybody for doing an excellent job, it's been a pleasure working with all the village boards the past 28 years. I think we've had a lot of success, and I hope a lot of success in the future, so again, thank you, and may God bless. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will go recognition of audience, real quick. Anybody have an issue? If none, before we go to our commissions, where I think we have a couple variances, I've asked the chairman to address those issues, and with that, Dale, you are the chairman on the variances that are being proposed.
Do you want me to do the Dutch American?
Do the entire, yes, do the entire.
Even though they're not here, so it'll be okay. Okay. Concerning ordinance establishing two variances to permit a sugar storage silo at Dutch American Foods at 1362 Dutch American Way, Prim Creek Business Park, a height variance of 10 feet, and a front side yard setback variance of five foot. Our firm, Buren, owner of the Dutch American, wishes to install a 50-foot silo for the storage and use of sugar in his facility on the front side of his building. The silo would also protrude five feet onto the required 40-foot front yard setback. Discussing this issue with his neighbors, concerns were expressed concerning truck parking on the street in front of his property, blocking traffic for other businesses located in the park. His chief met with the concerned parties and have developed a new parking ban on the street, available to all parties, which will be going into effect in the coming month. Petitioner also stated that the sugar silo would actually reduce truck traffic on the street and allow for off-parking of the sugar at night when the rest of the park is closed. Enclosed was the application, picture of the silo, and copies of the traffic agreement proposed and approved by the chief. After due diligence, after due notice and hearing by the PCC, approved a motion recommending that the variance be granted. Ordinance is enclosed, which includes a finding of facts. We also have three representatives tonight from the planning and zoning board. I don't know if they want to make any comments, but I have a few here. Location of the silo in front of the building, instead of along the side of the building, has two purposes. It will allow direct delivery into the silo without complicating trucks, and will also allow Dutch American to maintain their existing internal circulation and production. And the PCC's recommendations for approval for this petition was the silo should be painted white or another neutral color, as approved by the village zoning administrator, and that the Dutch American food logo may be painted on the silo. Any of the PCC members would like to speak?
I'll just make one for Kyle, because Kyle's not here. I'd be, he has a schedule, a mail finding, so possibly might be there on my shirt.
I got one quick question. Chief, has the parking issue been addressed? I mean, has there been any problems since you?
No, it actually seems to have been improved.
Okay, okay.
We have been diligent, providing accurate control there, and I'm going to be honest, you know, you've got some real knucklehead truck drivers, and you've got some professional ones. And it just seems that it's just a few that have a very hard time with backing up. I don't think it matters whether there were no trucks there or not, they just have a difficult time doing that. That is the delay, and that's what blocks the road. We have been diligent, we make contact with every truck driver personally, we've informed them of the new policies, we've informed them of the parking regulations, and within the next month or so, we're going to start issuing citations. But, I mean, we go down there now, it used to be trucks on both sides.
Yeah.
Very rarely do you see it on both sides, or they all seem to be on the west side where they're supposed to be. And Dutch American has been doing a good job of getting the word out to the truck drivers. And like in our initial discussions, when we talked about, it's the over-the-road drivers that they're going to have a hard time reaching out and touching, because they don't work for any company, they're independent. And those are the ones we've been having issues with, but we're addressing them.
I noticed the other day, when the administrator and I were driving around town, and there was one even parked up at Beatty waiting to get loaded, because he pulled in. So, I mean, they are, at this time and point, they seem to be adhering to the rules anyhow, so.
And in my discussions with the other businesses there, there have been great improvement.
Okay.
They've seen the improvement, they've seen the presence of the police, so they're making contact with the drivers. That's all they're interested in, is the safety.
And I think that was their biggest concern.
That was.
And, you know, I think that has been a good job.
Any other questions?
I've got a question. Is there a reason why the silo's not pushed further up against his wall? He's got a five-foot, a nine-foot nine, about five-inch distance between his wall and the edge of the silo. What's causing him to push his silo up?
Do you know the answer?
If you look at the plan?
The foundation probably burned. They have to put this foundation down, there's a lot of weight that silo's holding. That's probably the reason, because he probably has an over the age of a foot in on his building, sticks out a couple of feet.
And the only other thing, he has electrical, he has electrical back there also.
Would be on the front side.
The way I understand, huh?
Could be on the front side, this looks like it's in front of the facility.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, approve the ordinance number?
1180.
What is it?
1180.
1180.
1180. Establishing two variances to permit a sugar storage silo at Dutch American Foods, 1362 Dutch American Way, Prim Creek Business Park, at a height variance of 10-foot and a front yard setback variance of five-foot.
A second. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? None, take roll call.
I have a question, is that a motion, approving ordinances that include the language of the PCC for the painting of the silo? Let me clarify that, yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Concerning ordinance establishing two variances to permit a solid fence in lieu of a 50% open fence at a height of six-foot in lieu of a maximum height of five, as required by ordinance, at 1655 Blacktown Trail. The petitioner, Gerald Durany, wishes to fence in his rear yard with a solid fence being six-foot in height, with the top one foot being open decorative. He requested a solid fence, he is planning to install a pool, and there is a dog chained up in his yard near, neighbor's yard, sorry, which barks when his backyard is in use. There is also a grade change from the rear property line to the neighbor in the rear, which places his neighbor's yard several feet higher than his property. He plans on not fencing in the rear 10 feet of his yard, where there is a drainage easement, and he is installing a rear gate, so he can access the back 10 feet for maintenance. He has received permission from the HOA, which was his affiliate, and has a petition signed by 31 neighboring residents. No objections to his variance request. Also enclose our photos of the property, a site plan, a type of fence proposed, and the contract for the work to be performed. At a due notice in public hearing, at which several adjoining residents testified in favor of the variance, the PCC voted unanimously to recommend the variance, subject to the conditions as stated in the enclosed ordinance and the enclosed findings of fact.
Couple more things here. Petitioner will allow, looking for greater privacy and security for his children, and this is also based on the different grade is uniquely different from the other properties in his subdivision. The PCC, they aren't there, they might not be seeing anything.
I was too early, being a public hearing, a workshop fire came out. Obviously, it's a contentious subject, it's in the common fencing in general, but we would over it in a lot of detail. I think the fact that the pool was introduced into the equation is what probably prompted the unanimous decision, but if we're working without some preparation at all, it's not proven at all.
I noticed in the findings of facts also, it said the PCC made a recommendation that the gate and rear be installed, allow access to the 10-foot range, and utility easement, and also a pool should be installed within the backyard before June 1st, 2013.
What's that comment about?
Allow access to the 10-foot.
Because that was a drainage, a drainage from the pool or from his line? Okay.
They were concerned about the way of the grass.
The pool, pool has to drain, it's the same. Cannot.
Well, I have a few. This came up before the board some time ago, of course, I went out there and took some photos. So, of course, there's leaves on the trees, and that was new to us, so. I agree, the dog next door is barking, because when I was on the street, it was barking like crazy. It is changed, so it's going to be there. As for the elevation change, there's not much elevation change, if you look from the swale up, there is, but that's why the swale is built there. Swale is there to maintain the water and keep it away from the property. So, you can't take your elevation with respect to the swale. The neighbor to the east has a, I wish you would call it a deck, but it's not a very high elevated deck, but again, neighbors are going to build as they build, same when it comes to, there are, in this one photo, there are two pools that are erected with walkways around them. I'd say they're directly across the way, and probably about three houses away are where the two are located. But they have a solid fence, I don't see there, to me, I don't think there's a need for it. Safety is not the issue, if you have a fence, the dog can't get in there, and the dog's toes will also be on a chain. So, I don't, I still don't see the need to have a solid fence that's six-foot tall. Even if there is a pool, I still don't see a need for a fence that's six-foot tall. There was a property owner who had a pool built in Prairie Crossing. Fence was high, we had him knock it down, so it was within the village code requirements, and it was already installed.
Technically, is it a five-foot solid additional grid?
Doesn't matter. The lattice is part, the lattice is part of the fence. If it's six-foot, you're still up, whether it's a lattice or not, that's part of the fence structure. I just don't, I still do not see a need to have a solid fence in that situation. You can still achieve some kind of privacy without a solid core fence all the way through. It's my opinion. During the PCC meetings, there was a neighbor that came and testified, as far as what you're saying with the elevation change, I too have gone and looked at it, Brian. And I understand what you're saying about the swale, but if you look at the height of the foundation, there is a minimum of three to four-foot difference in height of foundation from foundation. The neighbor came and actually testified that on his riding mower, he's practically holding on just to be able to mow that pitch. It is pretty drastic. I don't think it's that drastic, John, I really don't. Again, that's my opinion on it, we each have our own opinions, I don't think it's holding on for dear life on a riding mower, but again.
We had somebody that actually testified at the PCC hearing.
Without having the grades of the area, it's all checked. Line of sight's not going to give you what the grade is, you've got to shoot it with a, you've got to get a guy to go out there and shoot it, or you've got to have the developments information. I don't have that. But from what I can see, from my eye, I don't think it's that steep of a grade change.
Is that pool going to be on for, is there a giant frame?
Yeah, it was put on there by June. It's not put quite enough, he has to do what the PCC. To do what?
Technically, it's in violation of the rule, you have to do it right back, where somebody watered already a solid fence, and pulling back there, and you look at that there, dollars in the same way, I need to do solid fence. I don't know what you're, you're being told, that you may not have a petition. Solid fence increases the situation.
On the pool subject, Mr. Durany, you agree in two years for the pool, are you still maintaining that you can't guarantee a timeframe? I understand that, if you're going to agree to that, within two years. I thought you weren't sure yet.
So, it does, that is a problem, you require a solid fence with a pool. It causes a problem, because the pool's taken out, like we own it. This fence then becomes a legal, non-constitutional fence. And that becomes a problem. I guess we have to, Mr. Durany, put up a pool in two years, we probably have to sign it. It'd be a long form complaint before.
Well, you could have to get, yeah, you have to get a permit for the pool anyhow, so, I mean, you would know that, so. Yeah.
From what I understand, Mr. Durany now meets all the requirements of the variance that he's requesting. He says he will put in the pool after two years. He was very, before, within two years, before that, he wasn't sure if he could meet that timeframe. Now, he's saying yes, so now he meets all the requirements that's, you know, coming before us. My thing is, something that came up in the planning and zoning meeting, and I think this, to me, is important, is one of the planning and zoning members mentioned, that it was George Unama. He said, why should privacy be based upon a pool, solely on the pool? So, in other words, if you have a pool, you have privacy, but if you don't have the pool, you don't have privacy. And I think that's key, and that's important. I think that's maybe where we, maybe somewhere down the road, we could look at the ordinance again, because I think they're right, privacy can be based on something more than just a swimming pool. And secondly, is the type of pool, the type of fence that we're allowing, and that's no fault of his, is a solid fence. I was taught, Mr. Durany, you keep asking, you kept asking that you couldn't really get a real answer of why you prohibit, you know, solid fences. If you don't know, I was a police officer retired, okay, what I was always taught is two things. Number one, it's not so much whether the police officer's going to jump the fence, the six-foot height, because the last guy knew if they jumped the fence, put his pants, so that's not the issue. But the issue is, is we don't allow solid fences for mainly so that a police officer can look into your backyard. Granted, sometimes you may have to do it on a flat, and so on and so forth. It has to do with, like, we're taught that you don't put bushes, large bushes, right up against your house, because someone can hide behind your bushes. Same thing is with the fence, if someone in fact is doing something wrong, you would like the police officer to be able to see him, and you would like to be able to have him catch it and patrol your backyard, but he can't really do that if in fact there's a solid fence, okay? And that's one reason. And the other reason why, is I was always taught it had to do with airflow. You mentioned that your fence would, is going to be built like a rock, like a rocket you brought to, you have a lot of faith in the company putting in, which I do too, I'm very familiar with the fence company. But bottom line is, like, the winds we had today, Augusta wind, a solid fence, you know, is more apt to knock, but the wind is more able to fall over than a fence that has airflow. But that, again, we're allowing it, that's no fault of yours, but you were asking that, you know, quite a bit, well, that's what I was taught. But again, I go back to, I think the key is that, like, why should privacy be hinged on just a pool? But he's agreeing to the pool now, so that's not even an issue anymore.
And I think the other thing that needs to be taken into consideration is that the proper process was followed. He showed some, his sharp hardship for the height. The solid really isn't an issue, you know, it's a matter of putting the cart before the horse. The pool, to get the fence, well, can't get the fence, not going to put in a pool. But to me, the biggest thing that stands out is that he's presented us with 31 signatures of neighbors. These are neighbors that are going to be the ones that have to see this fence every day. And not only did they sign this, but there was a pretty large number of them that came to testify and show their support on his behalf. The neighbors don't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it.
I have a question for Mr. Durany, if I could ask. Do you have any objection of putting maybe five feet on each side, and the back just be a six-foot?
I think that tends to be the whole question.
Oh, I'm just asking.
I do, if I'm going to spend this kind of money, I'd like it to look uniform. I mean, this is an $8,000 project, and as far as, you know, aesthetic scope, I mean, and privacy, you know, one, we're not gaining what we're, this whole process that I've been after, so I don't think, what I propose is what, you know, my wife and I feel very strongly involved in.
Mr. Durany, I can ask you a question. The pool you plan on putting in in 2015, what kind of pool is that going to be? Above-ground pool? Above-ground pool, how far off the ground would be the top of the pool?
I don't know yet. I was told that the pool, that the pool that is intended, the pool that meets the ordinance cannot be pulled up and taken down on a daily basis. So, it would be, even though it's worth it as a permanent structure, no upright pool is a permanent structure. If somebody wanted to take it down every week or every month, they could, so it's going to be framed pool. At this time, you know, we haven't overwhelmed with just this, not alone, although I'm shopping around with.
Is your plan to have the pool 3, 4 feet deep?
Like I said, I don't, I don't have those numbers very clear.
Are you planning on having a walk-around on the pool, a deck to the top of the pool? To be able to get into the pool?
We haven't even thought that part, I mean, I don't know.
Do you understand why I'm asking that question?
No, I don't.
Because if you have a deck around the pool, a six-foot fence isn't going to do a damn thing for you. That dog is still going to see you if you've got a deck on that pool. So, that pool, if you plan on doing your privacy where you will not see the dog, even though people in a pool is going to cause the dog to bark because of the noise that happens? If you have a deck around the edge of that pool, someone standing up, you're above the top of that fence.
And roll call, that's just being in our backyard.
The whole idea of this thing is, so you have a pool, you've got a pool with a solid fence. The solid fence is acquired with the pool.
Right.
If the pool doesn't go in, the fence goes down.
Right. I'm understanding this, the solid fence is allowed for privacy, is that the main reason why it's solid is allowed? Since people have pools?
The fence ordinance allows you to have a solid fence as long as there is a pool installed. And that's what the variance is based on, the fence.
What's a solid, what's a solid fence decision based on if you have a pool? Why, for privacy, I'm assuming, is that correct?
If you want the privacy on your pool, yes. There are other people in the area that I've seen in photos in your same subdivision that do not have a privacy fence around their pool. There are other pools in the village that do not have privacy fences around their pool. And it's a fence around the property, and it's a standard fence. So, privacy comes at the point of the owner of the property, but it's got to be in compliance with the village ordinance. And the idea, the original idea of this is, you wanted to have privacy when the pool was installed. But if you have a deck around that pool, the fence is pretty much null and void, because the dog's still going to see you.
Feature allows a solid five-foot fence if people put decks on their pool.
Yes, what I'm saying is that the fence is not going to give you any help, for the fact that if you're on the deck, you will see the dog.
But what if we're not on our deck?
You're not, that, what I'm saying is, if you build a deck around the pool, the privacy from the dog is gone, because he'll see you.
What about the privacy of my neighbors who are at least three feet higher than me?
I still don't think they're three feet higher than me.
Oh, it's, if I, if I need, if I knew that it was the point of getting the shot with the transit, I mean, it's, I'm not the only one of that opinion, so, I mean, there's, we're talking 30-plus neighbors, and if I knew it would have made a difference, I would have brought 1,000 signatures with that opinion, because to myself and numerous, numerous other people, they feel that bare minimum of three feet of a grade difference. And I don't know where you're judging as far as from starting point to ending point, but if you're standing in my backyard, I'm borderline almost eye level looking at my neighbor's backyard, so. It's drastic, and I'm not, I don't think, I'm obviously not the only person who thinks that. Very, very severe grade difference. That's not just based on the swale. However, that corner of that subdivision was graded, and I, I mean, it is what, it's a drastic grade difference.
Is this the fence that you plan on putting in, this right here?
I can't.
Sure.
Correct, yes.
Correct.
Yeah, that's it. It's in the bid.
Are you very adamant that you need to have the solid fence, rather than something that you can kind of see through? You want the solid fence.
Yeah, this is why I started the whole process.
I just want to clarify what I think, okay. Anybody else have any questions?
No, again, I'll state, we're looking at somebody that obviously is adamant about it. They coughed up approximately almost 10% of the cost of their entire project to go through this variance project, or through this variance process. PCC voted unanimously on this recommendation to the board. Um, PTC voted unanimously on this recommendation to the board. Um, the neighbors have no problem with it, he's got the signatures, he's on the petition. Um, the idea of the variance is that he showed the hardship with the, the grade elevation, which is why I think they recommended that, or, and approved that, and same thing with the solid fence with him agreeing to put in the pool, so.
Anyone else?
I got one quick question.
Sure.
I, I, I see here, you, you got a dog that barks at all hours of the day and night, you, have you called the police on that?
No, I've spoken with my neighbor.
What's that?
I've spoken with my neighbor about it, trying to request.
Have, have you ever called the police on it?
No, I have not.
All right, that's something you should do first of all, I had the same situation in my neighborhood, of course, the police came and finally, the gentleman finally left with his dog, but I had the same situation. Dog would be out all night barking, and the police went all there numerous times, in fact, the, the dog even bit, bit somebody running, you know, but, uh, I, I, to me, the dog barking issue, I think it's the police, that's considered a nuisance, is that correct, Chief?
Well, yeah, in, in your circumstance, it wasn't something where you could communicate with that neighbor, because that neighbor was not receptive.
I understand.
I encourage every resident to talk it over with their neighbor.
Right.
Because many times when you call the police, it's gonna, it's gonna build some.
That's the latest. We had this issue, issue once before in Hunter's Chase, with, with the dog, remember?
No, there were two neighbors.
They wanted to put a fence up, yeah.
There were two neighbors that were, it was actually the dog actually barked, it wasn't the dog barking.
Yeah, I, I remember going out there, and how did we resolve it, they had a dog run alongside the, the house, and it used to bark, and I think they left too.
I, I think the issue resolved itself, it's hard to deal with.
Mr. Gerany, how long has this, um, barking been occurring?
Something has been.
Been how long has that been, how many years?
Four and a half years ago.
Four and a half years ago, and the dog's still barking?
I'll buy that bracket on the dog.
Oh, boy. Okay, okay, I'd like to make a motion approving ordinance number eleven eighty-two. Eleven eighty-two or eighty-one?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm getting ahead of it.
Eleven eighty-two variance to permit a solid fence in lieu of a fifty percent open fence at a height of six foot in lieu of a maximum height of five as required by the ordinance at sixteen fifty-five Foxhound Trail with the PCC's recommendations that the, uh, a gate at the rear should be installed in the fence to allow access to the ten feet drainage and utility easement for maintenance, and the pool should be installed within the backyard before, uh, June first, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Okay, the motion been made in second, any discussion or questions or comments? If not, uh, roll call.
Cleary.
No.
Aaron?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Cooperus?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Okay, Cleary. Okay, continue on, yeah, finish yours right away, would you please?
Considering ordinance amending Title Four for the Village Code pertaining to building codes, Village Inspect, Inspection Service wishes to have the Village Building Codes updated to at least the two thousand and sixth version. This is the latest version of the code, which does not require residential sprinklers, which included, includes the latest technology application in energy conservation design, it is also a code that almost all municipalities are using today, with the exception of those which require sprinklers. Several amendment, amendments have been made to the older codes, are now part of this code, so we can eliminate these amendments. When we conducted code revisions last year on this chapter, our now retired inspector did not want to update the codes, but our new inspector believes now is the time. This amendment also requires installation of three foot, uh, sorry, three inch rock at the base of the driveways prior to approval of foundations to keep the job site more clean and mud off the streets, receiving close ordinance.
Do you understand his recommendations, I mean, that, that this is common practice, or like?
Our new inspector's been pushing this, trying to certify this code, and he says the code is just below requiring residential sprinklers, he doesn't think he's ready for it yet, but believe it or not, a lot of amendments in our current code are incorporated into two thousand and six.
Okay, cool, I'd like to make a motion approving ordinance number eleven eighty-two.
Yeah.
Second.
Take motion in the second, any discussion on the ordinance?
Bob, we're moving from BOKA?
Yes, BOKA, the last.
It's no longer being updated.
No, BOKA no longer technically exists.
Right.
It's now the ICC, the International Code Council, and we had ninety-nine BOKA as our most recent code, I'm sorry, reader, discussion and promotion.
Yes.
Yeah, no discussion, correct.
I'm sorry, and, um, our old inspector was not certified in the old six codes, the one that retired, the one that we have now lives, and he's already removed to the old six, but there is no BOKA as we remember it, in fact, the president of BOKA lives in Major, Mr. Beckhauer, and his son who works for the ICC is recommending the old six.
Okay, any other discussion, questions, none, roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Cooperus?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Yes.
In the Building Department, Co-Enforcement, monthly reports were enclosed for your review. Considering a motion approving a bill from the MGM Eschroll account for replacement of street signs, um, street name signs, all signs in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-two cents. This was to replace all the s, name, street name signs in this subdivision that are peeling and too small to read. Uh, buddy, would that have been completed?
Um, other than there was two missing streets out there that were never, had holes up, uh, the rest of the project is, is completed, they're up and in.
I'd like to make a motion then approving for a bill from the MGM Eschroll account for replacement of the street sign, name signs, all signs in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay.
Okay, motion in the second, any discussion on the, on this issue? None, roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Cooperus?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
And then into my report.
Okay, thank you, uh, we'll go back to the beginning of our, our packet, and, and go to the commissions, but Carmen, did you come in after, is that Carmen?
Yeah.
You, you have any issue here?
No.
Oh, okay, fine, okay. Uh, beautification, uh, nothing to report, they did have a meeting and I failed to attend, so, fourth of July?
We did take delivery of the twenty thirteen Camaro, which is a very nice car, and the park employees started yesterday, I believe, to start maintaining the park, anything else, gentlemen?
I think, Awas?
Awas, uh, any paper bricks ordered received by April tenth, which is Wednesday, I believe, will be in place for Memorial Day. So if anybody's, is out there looking to order paper bricks for the Veterans Memorial, do it now, uh, to get them in by Memorial Day. Our next meeting is going to be May first.
When is it, May first?
May first, May first, the second is the first, first.
Okay, is that it, Scott?
Yeah.
You?
Uh, nothing to report except for this Saturday, starting at seven PM, at Ambet's is our first annual Parents' Night Out fundraiser. Um, tickets will be available at the door for twenty-five dollars each, and that's it.
Okay, we'll go to our committees, finance?
Uh, Nelson? Thank you, we've got the, uh, kosher reporting in your packet, first page of all eight accounts. Um, the, uh, water sewer debt is up a little bit, we had, uh, NICOR payment, comment payment. Uh, the, uh, capital, uh, water sewer capital is down, uh, almost sixty thousand, that's, uh, for paid bill for the Maxwell Street, uh, Water Main. Uh, infrastructure is, uh, close, but it increases a half percent sales tax. Uh, the fourth of July, you'll notice, uh, there's a dip there, we picked up a car, that, uh, trustee Samansky referred to. And, uh, a little bit, uh, down on the youth commission, there was a couple of dances, the, uh, daddy-daughter and mother-son dances, there's, any questions about, as far as the treasury report? The, uh, commission and special account, uh, bills, those are listed there for you, a total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven sixty-four thirty-three, checks that I wrote, electronic fund transfers, any questions about any of those? Okay, also, uh, yes.
Before we go on this report, we should include, uh, a condition that we transfer thirty-eight thousand, twenty-five from Water Main account because we maintain the, the bill for the Maxwell Water Main account. So we should transfer that money before the end of this year, make that zero, actually, you're going to owe three payments to Capital Water, is that correct, Jonathan? We pledged that, Water Main.
Well, Water Main, yeah, what's in the water sewer replacement account.
So when we get to making a motion, just add that, that we, if you want, I can transfer it from the Water Main account to the Capital.
A total of thirty-eight, one eighty-five?
Yeah, well, you might have to keep some money there to keep the account open, I'm not sure, is that, is that an actual account or is that a paper account? At thirty-eight, one thirty-five, it's, it's own account.
Thirty-eight, one eighty-five.
You get thirty-eight thousand?
You know, it's, it's, you know, it's not in its own account, it's in.
So it'd just be a general ledger transfer, okay?
A transfer. Uh, well, I'll actually transfer it, current accounts.
So there is a checking account, so what, then you have, you have to give the minimum then?
No. Well, you should have something coming in.
Do it for thirty-eight.
Really, if you really wanted to look at it.
Do it for thirty-eight thousand even. Just to keep the account, so if there's a line on the treasury, that's a good.
Yeah, it'll be a physical transfer, uh, that'll do, uh, actually, it won't, it won't be a, a check outright, but it will get transferred to my account tonight.
Yes, so you should have your.
Any other questions? Uh, I did include the, uh, trend data, the Village Accounts, and period the last four years, it's been a while since you've seen this. Uh, but you'll notice, uh, for the last six months, uh, our cash, uh, has been, uh, ahead of last year's, uh, cash, and probably for the last year, we've been ahead of, uh, two years, three years, and four years ago, so we've stabilized pretty much as, uh, as far as our cash is concerned compared to previous years. And again, uh, I, I want to emphasize some decisions that you made three years ago really, really helped us. As far as the, uh, bank proposals to refinance the seven hundred thousand, we do have some in, uh, expecting a couple more. Uh, we have a meeting on the twenty-second, I believe, uh, should have everything analyzed and, uh, prepared to make a recommendation for that, for that meeting. Any questions? Thank you, Mr..
I make a motion approving the Treasurers' Report and the Fiscal Activity in the, uh, prior month, and also transferring thirty-eight thousand dollars from the water sewer replacement account to the general account.
Okay.
Motion been made in the second, yes, Bob.
The meaning of that motion is capital account.
Is it?
Yeah.
You said it's capital?
To a capital. Okay, any other comments, none, roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Cooperus?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Yes. The variance reports are also provided to us for the month of February. Uh, the bills are provided to us under separate cover and also are at our tables for our review. Any questions? If it being none, I make a motion to pay the bills in a total of one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
Okay, motion been made in the second, if the proof of bills is presented, any comments or questions? I, I just got one, thirty thousand of that was sales tax reimbursed, otherwise the bills would only have been about seventy thousand, so it's pretty good. Okay, that, roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Cooperus?
Yes.
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes. Uh, the budget, we had our meeting, uh, last month, Bob's also provided us an updated budget, um, was issued to us on April twenty-second to review. We'll have the, uh, hearing for the budget in the next meeting, the twenty.
Twenty-second meeting.
Twenty-second, so that'll be, he's already provided us the memo, this is the memo you've given everybody out, so, okay. That ends our report.
Okay, police safety?
Yeah, Police Department Monthly Report from March and Enclosed for your review, update on school safety and security measures, chief?
Well, what we've done since our last meeting is the equipment that we agreed on, that we had on our sheet to order, we began ordering that equipment, some of it has come in. Uh, we've also had a meeting with the school district to begin our security audit of the schools, we also have another field training exercise that will occur later this month. Um, our next process after that is, uh, we do plan, we're gonna be reaching out to the daycare in Zion and start, uh, doing a security audit there, offering our assistance on what we can do, recommendations we can make with regards to safety at their schools, but it's a little different than a public school.
Okay, thank you, chief, uh, Beechey Rec Baseball Parade is scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from Zion Department's Park Down Penfield. Uh, chief, you wanna raise up the date on that?
Yeah, we've been asked to have a squad car leave and a squad car and the parade, and we've got those, uh, um, in place right now, it's not a long parade. Uh, I don't think there's any barricades we need to put up, it's a short parade, we do it every year, we haven't had a problem with it, it goes smooth.
Okay, thank you, chief, any questions of the chief or myself?
I have two items, uh, the Beechey Rec raid reminded me, there's going to be a high school walk again, I don't know the date, I don't know the exact, but knowing how the, the school kids are supposed to coordinate that activity, usually are last to find out, it's the last minute rush, I'm just letting everybody know, it'll probably be on a Friday morning, probably be the end of the day, we usually have that cancer walk.
Well, in previous years, it's been.
That twenty-fifth? Okay.
Twenty-fifth on a Thursday.
On a Thursday, okay.
Is that a full or a?
I know they're planning it, I know they're gonna ask, why don't you blow out some garbage cans and things like that, but it seems it works. And the second thing, Jeff, is we are approaching the cutoff date on squad cars, you're gonna have to ask the board for permission to order a squad car? And that, does that need to be on the meeting, next meeting?
I don't know.
Will you look into that? I thought it's not.
I will look into it, it's a little different, because usually when we, the, the cutoff was like March fifteenth, but it seems like there's a stock of them in there.
Okay, I just want you to get knocked out of the car if you want it.
Right, I will check on that.
And if, and if the question of the chief or myself, if not, that concludes my report.
Okay, streets and alleys?
We received a letter from the post office, uh, let's take a look at the pavement in front of the post office and the alleyway, uh, we did take a look at it, we are in the process of getting prices uh, from air applied paving, who will be out here making street repairs in the future, and others, just to compare it to, uh, see if we can do something to make those repairs, and we'll report that, uh, further in the future. There's a pre-con meeting scheduled for the twenty-third, twenty thirteen road program, uh, Monday, April fifteenth at ten AM at the Village Hall. And Jonathan, I understand you can't make that?
Uh, it did all.
I'll fill you, if you can, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That ended my report.
Okay, sewer and water?
Uh, water and sewer monthly reports are enclosed for your review, um, and we also have been receiving, um, our new reports from our new operator, which are, uh, nice to see. Um, buddies, anything you wanna fill us in on with the transition of the, the, the new operator, everything's smooth?
We'll enjoy it.
Yeah, everything's going well.
Good, good.
Yep.
Uh, and then an update on the Maxwell Street Water Main project, um, I mean, everything's done, complete.
I think, as you can see, well, you know, the restoration is still, um, asphalt plants are gonna open up probably in the next three weeks, you can guarantee they're not gonna be able to get in there and do any of the appropriations. I would imagine, uh, when they bring their equipment in, they'll probably try to pound it all out within a, a two or three day, uh, time span. Also, they still have to come in and, um, level their, up at Nantucket Cove, that's part of our agreement. And that's it.
When I, sewer and water reports are not enclosed, they are supposed to be.
I am, I did. Did you get, did you get a visitor part? I, I got a part, I'll give you a new bag.
Yeah.
Where mine, I have one, I have a.
In yours? Go to the very back. No, I had mine.
I don't know either. I don't know either, Bob.
I don't know that half.
That's the part that's.
You have it in.
Yeah.
Should be in there.
Look, it's, it's not in the right. Look, it's, it's not in the right order, it's right, it's right after the police.
See, we're, we're jumping around in the meeting, so.
Right. Yes, but I go right after.
Well, at least, some of that was from Hartley and Bearin.
Send the bag of.
Then we got a monthly report for that, Baxter and woman.
That's how you get them mixed up. Go, go.
No, 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 it's going the right way.
Send the bag of the post office.
There's Baxter, there's water, there's sewer.
It's police, I didn't wanna see the police on my, I didn't wanna see we needed a new copy.
All right, any other questions? If not, that concludes my report.
Just, I have one, I'm sorry Jonathan, I wanted to point everyone's attention, now that we've all found our monthly sewer.
Took a monthly.
Yeah, the average daily flow is of serious concern. We're at seven hundred and seventy thousand, now we have filed for our operating permit, which gave us three low flow ones in the four hundred to five hundred range. When they come out, when they do their visual inspection, our operating permit sometime in summer, they will pull these reports at seven seventies and stick out like a sore thumb, so he's giving you a heads up.
Well, you ha- you have some highs, but we also had those three very low.
I have never seen the average daily flow that high in this great sewer, I don't remember seeing one ever.
The only, the only thing, and my, I, Bob's concerned about it, but we had the rain and the snow melting at the same time, that was probably equivalent to four inches of rain, but. And I, I, I don't wanna, you know, I wouldn't panic yet, but again, this is your infrastructure, you better start planning for the future. And if you think you got some money now, it'll be gone, baby, because you're looking at six, six, seven million dollars.
Yeah, they put you on critically restricted status, you're done.
We're screwed, telling you. We, we, when we built this thing in ninety five, we thought this thing was gonna last us twenty five, thirty years. We never, we never expected this kinda growth. And it seemed like what happened.
Mister Mayor, I agree with you that infiltration would be causing these high numbers, but you did come back and said, well, you know what, instead of expanding your plant.
Oh, I know.
Why don't you go door to door and limit infiltration?
Yeah, I, I don't think that'll, that, that's not cost effective yet.
Refund your own residences too, because it's not, not pleasant.
So, well, like I said, you, you, you've got some hurdles ahead, so.
Yeah, I just concern.
Be ready.
I'm glad we got our operating permit in what we did and had those dry four months, maybe we could buy another five years.
You understand, our, our plant's only designed for six hundred thousand gallons, okay? And you're only allowed eighty percent of that by right, so we really don't get the full six. So, I mean, that's your, your operating parameters, so. We're way, way above, but.
And you are right, if you look at your water pumps, you're way below what you're, you're at the plant, so most of it probably is the original water.
You're four, over, you're just over four hundred. Yeah, four hundred thousand gallons?
Yeah, that should be what you bring in, like a rifle.
Well, what worries me is he said you're not allowed to get up to six hundred, which means you better not be pumping more than four hundred.
Critical review occurs when you reach point seven of your design capacity.
Design capacity, right.
On a, on a monthly basis. Uh, restricted it serves at point nine, I remember.
Yeah, I can't remember, it's been a long time ago, but we were, we were there, we've been there.
When I see a number of one point four, I'm like, oh, geez. You know, and I, we were unrestricted twice, once on the sewer plant, and we had to build the new plant, 'cause we couldn't add lines. And then we were on the circuit with our water, 'cause we didn't have enough water storage. And Baby Lumber wanted to come to town, and that's the only way to work the water. So it's happened twice before. Water, we're okay. Am I right, but I hope with water, we got.
I'm happily, hopefully, enjoyed it.
Again, those are the two key factors for any development, future developments, so if you don't address those issues and ignore them, you're in trouble, so. That it under water sewers? Okay, public buildings, properties?
Yeah, we need to consider an ordinance establishing a cancer memorial commission. Uh, in your packets, there's the ordinance. Uh, it's back behind the water and sewer shortly thereafter. Uh, it's an ordinance, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance adding chapter seven to title two of the village code to establish a cancer memorial commission in the village of Beechore and repealing all village code sections and ordinances or part thereof in conflict here with.
Second. Okay, motion is second, any discussions or questions on it?
Eleven eighty three.
Eleven eighty three, right. None, roll call?
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Yes.
Bob, it's eleven eighty two.
Eleven eighty three.
Eighty three, yeah.
Eighty two was the.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Okay. Okay. That's why I asked, I wasn't sure.
Status of Fireman Park benches, they have been ordered, they'll be in, uh, the village in about two or three weeks. Gonna be delivered to the village hall, and they're gonna be directed to go directly to the park. So those will be installed once they're in, uh, by Buddy and, and his crew. Uh, updates on names, addresses, I gotta get what the chief got as far as the park, uh, the park signs. Uh, special newsletter distribution, it went out, everybody received one, I'm glad it went out, because I know there were a lot of questions. Were there a lot of calls into the village?
Not too many, but we did run into a problem today. Those big empty cans like to blow in the wind, and I know I found mine on my, uh, in my bushes in my yard. So, that is a new, unique problem, when they're empty, after they get empty, they tend to be big wind sails. It was a very unique deal.
But I think it was very timely to send that letter out, because I know a lot of people, you know, either it might have been out of town or, or whatever, so. Uh, the spring newsletter will be mailed on Wednesday, April tenth. Uh, I think everybody received a draft of that, so, but it's gonna be going out, uh, this week. That ends my report.
Okay. Gail, nice job, you're done already.
I'm done.
Huh? Okay, Elian Expressway update, uh, uh, the last workshop was held the fourteenth of March, and a planning session was held April second. Uh, the Will County Governmental League and also the Senator for Economic Development, uh, is interested in, in forming a planning corridor for the entire Elian. Uh, I had, had a meeting with, uh, the CED director, I think it was like two, oh, you weren't there about, were you? Two weeks ago, and that, and that, that's something that they're interested in, uh, doing proper planning along the proposed Elian Expressway. So hopefully there'll be some money available for, for planning, uh, along that corridor. Uh, we also have a workshop, uh, this Wednesday, the tenth, at Piattone. And there's two public hearings coming up, and I don't have those dates.
I wanna say it's the sixteenth and the eighteenth.
The sixteenth is in, in Piattone, and the eighteenth is in, in, yeah, Indiana.
Or Cedar Lake.
Cedar Lake, I, I definitely wanna go with the one in Indiana, because you get a lot of controversy over there, so, uh, I wanna try to make that one. In fact, I was asked yesterday if I was gonna attend that, so, uh, if you want some entertainment, uh, Indiana's the place to go, right, Tim?
That's right.
Huh?
You're still the object of punishment.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, no, if you can attend the, uh, public meetings, I would, I would recommend that. Uh, South suburban airport update, really nothing new on that. And it's number, item number three, you can see our state rep, LG Sims, and is Donnie coming also, Donnie Trotter, both of them coming at the same time?
So I was told.
Okay, well, see, they're gonna be holding office hours on the twenty fourth of April, so I won't be here, but I hope some trustees get a chance to stick their, uh, neck in the door and introduce yourselves and, and voice some concerns about.
The worst thing that could happen is if we have office hours and nobody shows up.
Yeah, that's right, that's all, and, and that, that is disgusting. I, I used to have those office hours and got to the end, uh, nobody came at all, so we, we just continued them, but. Uh, and again, I think an issue that you really have to stress is planning, planning money possibly for the Elian corridor, if it's coming, you know? And, uh, like I said, I think it's very important, so, uh, definitely.
Is this gonna be their only date?
What's that?
Is this gonna be their only date, or are they gonna come out monthly?
I thought they were gonna come out, was quarterly, I thought they were going to, this, I thought they were gonna have, oh, they wanted to hold them, I thought regularly.
It depends on the success.
Yeah, and that's why I think, you know, we gotta have people show up.
People show us up.
Right, right.
I know Lisa Dukin used to do this, she would meet in the park, she'd have a coffee in the park, and then she had one at the golf course.
Yeah, and, yeah, we, yeah, yeah, she did have, yes. Uh, and again, uh, I know some of the legislators go to different restaurants and have, I know they go to Grand Park or, or, even a Mothmas once in a while. We just don't seem to get much coverage here, but maybe now with new reps, they will holding regular hours here, so, I guess it's a problem, so. Let them come down and let people voice their concerns, so. Uh, item number four, continue discussion on the architectural review committee, anybody have any thoughts or ideas since it was brought up at the last meeting? Comments?
I tried to, uh, an architectural review form for each of the subdivisions and question. And we can fill those forms out, try that first before we go to the committee. I know Tim's here tonight to speak on this very issue, uh, 'cause I know we've been down this road before. And Tim led a, a, a meeting where we discussed codes, and Tim, I'm not gonna speak for you, so I'll let you turn your, okay? Speak to Warren on this issue.
Since we discussed this was back in oh six, when architectural review came up, you know, we decided that it wasn't appropriate, try to push on everybody that, that time, we're gonna do it only through development and have those plans at that time. Uh, so if you're just looking for compliance for the new subdivision, the newer subdivisions that have park, uh, requirements in place, then a checklist to make sure that those things are going through. And then also to make sure that each subdivision has a strong park board in place is important. That's really where your strongest control is gonna come from, is that local park board pretty similar. Uh, you know, we're trying to get two or three people together, it's hard, the village side, we had no enforcement mechanism anyway, because they're private covenants. Uh, unless they're violating some of the village ordinance, you can't enforce it anyway. So strongly encouraging, uh, you know, their arc boards to do the right thing, review the plan before it comes in. For building permit, and now we're kind of evolving things, becoming a good time to make sure that they're still in place and, uh, that we do.
Question on the architectural board, board, uh, right now, we have a board of one, the developer. And we don't have no input really, I mean, he signs off on it and basically that's it.
Yeah, that's MGM.
That is a problem, so, and again, I think that's a problem for future developments, that we have somebody that signs off on, on, on these things to make sure, like you said, these things are checked. Because we, we got caught in, uh, in a few issues, and Bob did a little bit more research, I thought we had it, MGM was, was, uh, plantings, uh, around the, uh, uh, foundation. And lo and behold, it was in there, and, uh, this developer, I got it signed off, but careless, and, and the developer don't wanna put him in there. Now, he's never responded, did he, Bob? And we're not gonna issue any more building permits until he does put foundation plantings around some of the buildings that he's putting up right now. Uh, you, you, you talk about cyclical development, and that's without any foundation plantings. I think, that's my opinion, maybe you, you like that, but I personally don't, but I think you gotta have something to break up in the minority in the front, so. Comments? Yes?
Bob gave me the information from MGM. You're right, Tim, if, if there's, you need a good art committee to do it at the subdivision. Prairie Crossings has one, Bill's on it. I used to be on it when we first started it.
Bill, we don't have a problem Prairie Crossing, Bill, Bill is the art committee.
Well, prior, prior to that, he was our president and I was on the arc board, but the arc board is very involved in Prairie Crossing. But the arc board's really meeting the requirements of the covenants of that. Prior to that, the PUD indicates what's an acceptable build out. So even if you don't have an arc, there are acceptable build outs and requirements of the PUD. So even if you don't have an art committee in place, PUD takes precedence of what kind of build out, 'cause that's what was allowed to let that development go through. So if someone in, in MGM decides to install something that is in total discompliance with the PUD, it's in violation. The village does have the right to say, you're in violation of the PUD.
And that's a village ordinance at that time, anything else?
Right. And the problem you have in the one that we have right now, it's in clear non-compliance with the PUD. Because that, that, the type of building that they were building, first of all, was supposed to be a two story, a single story, then it went to a two story. And when that happened, it went pretty much unknown, and that's what created that huge facade of, of a blank wall. Very long story. So the issue was, they had to have brick on it, but they didn't have a brick ledge, so they couldn't put standard brick on it. So it's more of a brick fascia with, with a, literally a, a, a installed secondary ledge to provide support for the bricks. That's really what's going on. But if they would have complied with the PUD requirement, there would have been brick on that front section.
Any other comments?
We'll try it with the review, like Prairie Crossing, we're not having a problem, because is Mister Kenney still dealing with the bill?
No, then it's about, um, the, the, the.
I mean, that's an arc that works, an arc where the developer is the controlling agent, and he's trying to sell lots.
So he wants.
Doesn't work. Prairie Crossing did work, uh, actually, Hunter's Chase has worked pretty well.
With the exception, we, we, that, that wasn't right though either. And Bob Felipe held escrow and relea- released that, we had one house that had no, it was a requirement that.
You have to show me Hunter's Chase where a foundation plan is required, I don't see what.
But it was in his covenants, I believe.
You have to look.
And he had escrow for that. And he released escrow and it never was done, and that was a problem.
But Paul, what portion of, of Hunter's Chase has got three sections?
It's a first phase, I, I can show you, there's two houses out there that, Bob Felipe helped money in escrow to put the foundation plans in. Person evidently said they put them in, he got the escrow released, we should be in control of the escrow to make sure it's being done. And that's, that was a, that was a mistake.
No, my, my, there's no foundation.
There is no foundation, and, and their interpretation of landscape was sad, and you look at the, the agreement, hey, sad is, is, is it, you know? They didn't have to put any plantings around. You look at some of the homes out there. There's nothing.
One thing I, I, I think that we can approach, that I'd like to see us approach the, uh, MGM about would be, and it was one of my biggest concerns, and I brought it up to Bob. Is that with, with this style, this guy not doing the brick and him doing the false brick, you know, it's, it's the panels, you put up the chicken wire and it goes on, right? Uh, what's happening is, is there's no brick ledge, okay? There's no need for a brick ledge, as is.
Not with that.
No, but moving forward in the future, fifteen years down the road, this stuff comes off of that house. Somebody doesn't like the color of it or whatever, what are their options? Two options, the exact same thing or vinyl.
You're gonna get vinyl.
Which is most likely what would happen. Uh, uh, can we actually enforce him to mandatory brick ledge on all homes, even if he's doing the false brick? I don't think we can, but I think it would be advantageous to us to reach out to him and, and, and try to get that accomplished, because with this stuff, being in the trades, I know this.
It's not gonna last.
There's, there's, we don't know, i- it's too new of a product, there's twenty year, thirty year guarantees on this stuff, who knows, it's only been out five, ten years, right? So, but, but the thing is, is like I said, if somebody comes in and buys one of these houses to mountains, and says, I don't like it. They tear it off, they put a vinyl, I, 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 I think it'd be advantageous for us just to reach out to him and see if he can install a brick ledge on the front of the house at least.
The other option is.
So that way the, uh, future homeowner still has that option of, of putting in real brick.
The other option is in the checklist for that area, if brick is required in that front section. You make it part of the checklist, you guys got a brick ledge for this? You're just trying to help them out as they're going through it, but I agree, over time, that brick's gone.
And, and most likely will be replaced.
It's gonna be cheaper put vinyl.
Is that a big cost, is it a big ledge? I don't know.
Well, no, it's a step in the, in the foundation.
Yeah.
Four inches, four inches.
It's a step in the foundation, it'll support the brick.
Ten inch. Is it ten inch, or is it? So I. Can, can you put, uh, fake masonry on a wall that has a brick ledge?
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
The problem is, if you, if you have a brick ledge, the brick ledge is a lot wider than no ledge at all, I mean, you, you have a good size, 'cause the bricks sit on it.
Right, without the ledge, you can't.
Without the ledge, you can't ever put in the brick, the, the brick's gonna just, the weight of a brick's gonna.
Moving forward, looking fifteen years down the road, if that brick ledge, brick ledge is there, that homeowner, if he decides to tear off that fake brick that's installed there.
He has the chance to come back.
He has the option to still do four brick. Something, and like I said, just reach out to him maybe, we don't have a conversation with him.
I gotta get over the foundation planning pump first.
Yeah.
Before I mention.
He's gotta respond first. Okay? Till he responds, nothing's gonna happen.
I would just add it to your checklist, if, if it's required that they have a front brick, then just put on that you have brick ledge. It's something that, if you're going through, do they have it, do they have it, you'd be able to pick it off pretty quick.
Okay. Item number five, yeah, the C Piattone's been served a plant by Aqua to run, uh, a minimum size twenty inch water main all. Item number five, CPATON's been served the plan by Aqua to run a minimum size 20-inch water main all the way through. You've got the graph back there. This was talked about many years ago. They wanted to go along Route 50 at that time. In fact, if you look at the entire report, it's different things that they had looked at. They even talked about going west to CPATON, different routes. Of course, we were approached probably 15 years ago about Aqua Illinois running water up to the village of Beecher at that time. And they wanted by a water system which we felt looked better in our hands than somebody else's hands, so. Aqua's very, very aggressive. And I can understand, they have big dreams. They will take in Moni eventually, University Park they already have, they'll catch a lot of developments, so. And the airport also.
Question for you, Paul, isn't there a requirement of?
Taking water out of one shed and putting it in the other?
Yeah.
Yes.
We had that issue.
And you know what?
Four or five years ago.
I don't think it makes any difference anymore. Depends on how much clout you got, whether you can do stuff or not.
Does that came up when we were dealing with?
Yes, I know it, I know it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we said the same thing.
I remember like, wow, this is total violation.
How can you take water out of this water and dump it in there? Whatever.
I understand, they can't take Lake Michigan water and put it in another watershed. They can take water from another watershed and put it in Lake Michigan.
Whatever.
How can that be?
I understand how that. Two countries.
Okay, everybody know what's going on there, you got the maps and everything else. Okay, item number six, consider appointments to the Cancer Memorial Fund. I think Scott's got the list there. Any additions or corrections, Bob? I mean, Scott, or is this what you're?
This is what we're doing.
Anybody have any objections? I need a motion to approve the appointment, so.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions? Well, Paul?
Cleary?
Yes.
Yes, Simansky?
Go stay.
Capurros?
Yes.
Kula?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, wounded warrior or disabled veteran did move in Friday. I don't know if anybody gets cankey paper?
Yes.
A big article in the front page. Like I said, the gentleman has been through quite a bit, a lot of therapy. You look at him and the way he walks and everything else, you wouldn't know, wouldn't think anything was wrong with him. But evidently, it's damage that's going to be with him forever, so. We did move him in. I had public works employees over there, 10 o'clock, I believe it was, and they did the key turning thing. And they had the trucks there the day before, and they backed them up. And the public works employees unpacked both trucks and trailer. And took stuff, they had everything assigned to the rooms, so everybody knew where to take it, so. Like I said, I.
Thank you, buddy, for that.
As long as I'm back, you're a jerk.
Your men, tell your men, thanks.
There was a lot of stoke there though, they recovered.
And due to the fact they were new in the community, I took the public works employees and the family out for lunch then also, so. Like I said, they were very grateful. And I stopped over there, I was over there yesterday, and I stopped over there this morning. They got a few little issues they got to take care of. But he's very, very thankful and he loves Beecher. He loves the country, he loves the idea that he looks out the back of his house and he's got a farm field back there. And I say, you know what, I got the same thing, I had to look out my front window. But everybody likes a rural setting, and he, that's where he comes from, Indiana, and very grateful. And I think in the future, if you want to, I think this is future boards, if you want to do something to assist them, I, maybe something to discuss, I think you should put it on future agendas. And I think it's something that, if you want to assist them in some way or, it would be great, you know? So, so the other nanny's doing good, he's getting his license transferred over to Illinois plates and that nature. So, my goodness. Last item, number eight. And I think we need a youth commission for something like this. We used to have cleanup days in the past where we pick up all the trash around the community. Cardinal Drive, I don't know if anybody drives down Cardinal Drive and see all the litter along Cardinal Drive. Some of the subdivisions, I think we'd like to have a cleanup day again, like we used to have. Definitely helps the community. Is that a possibility, youth commission?
I think so.
I think the youth commission would be.
This would be good PR.
It would give me something good that we could definitely.
Could you coordinate that?
Be happy to.
Okay. Buddy, you're going to supply them with bags?
Yes, sir.
And just drop them off and put them along the roadside and they'll pick them up, so.
Look to get something, something going.
Right, I'd appreciate it, because driving around looks worth it.
Also get in contact with the boys' skeleton.
And the girls' skeleton.
Absolutely.
I think that's a good project, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay?
You need crowd control.
Paul, the B X mayor wants to take.
Ah, can we adjourn, or we?
Oh, okay.
All right, Paul, you're done.
I am done.
Well, I'm paying it over.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm paying it over.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm glad, I'm glad.
Been a while.
It's been a long time, hasn't it?
I just want to tell the people a little history about what happened and how you got talked into running. He was complaining all the time about the water. And he broke the hydrant out there in front of his house.
I did do that.
Now, this is yours, this is a.
All right, that's great.
You could play with that after you're done with this. Can I mess with hydrant yet? This is yours.
Oh, echo, good, good.
No, we'll rescue if you touch the hydrant. We'll rescue if you touch the hydrant.
Oh, yeah? I said, you know, Paul, this is the time that you, we need you on the board. So, you know, to take care of these problems. And you know, after he got on the board, I never heard a problem. So anyway.
This is cool.
You have a lot of friends out there.
And I don't know if they're friends or enemies.
Anyway, that, we, we need to talk now to Ron Backus, he's got something to say.
I know what that is too.
You know what this is for?
Yes, I know what that is.
Congratulations, you know, we appreciate it, all these years.
Thank you. I'll be darned.
This is the Sur Hall.
Yes, I know what that is.
One of the biggest public works projects that we did money-wise was the first EPA compliance on the Sur Plan.
Yeah, I just talked about that.
And you were the chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just talked about that tonight. Yeah.
Congratulations again.
Hey, again, without past board members, I mean, past board members cooperation and the village coming together, we wouldn't be where we are today, and half of these people wouldn't be here. I think, so we had foresight.
Right.
And we welcome new people. So, it's not that, hey, I thank you. Hey, this is good memorabilia. That's I can relate to.
We got a lot done that day, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, yes, we did. Yeah, even they had problems.
Yeah. Now, I think we better have.
Jim and Roger.
Who?
Jim and Roger.
Jim and Roger, okay.
These guys, you know what, basketball game's coming up.
Roger and I have been delegated to give you this from Bob Schmidt.
From Bob Schmidt?
Yes. You were authorized something, you weren't authorized, you did it.
We went and did it anyway.
You did it anyway, yes.
He wants you so you're always remembered.
This is your own now. This is your own.
This is your own.
This is your own.
Got something to say?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did, didn't we? Where's Gwen at? Remember when we went on the buying trip and we bought that? Yeah, but Bob Barber, Bob Schmidt, myself, and I was.
I think that one makes noise, push the buttons and.
Oh, yeah? Oh, it's remote control, all right. Oh, man. Yeah, that is cool, that is cool. Very, thank you very much. Remember that, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we used to do some.
There's a lot of things we remember. I don't know if we want them all out there, but there's a lot of things we remember.
We used to do some real wild things years back, you know? Hey, I thank you very, very much, gee whiz.
We're not done yet.
I am.
Hey, Bud Cogger.
Oh, jeez.
You've got something to say.
You got my personal water meter, right?
Yes, sir, I do. So friends, Romans, countrymen, lend me your ears. I come here to praise Loman at the very. You know, you got that nickname for me and other, quite a few other names.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, that one seemed to stick pretty well. And I don't know what happened, it started a domino effect, everybody jumped on it. Next thing I know, people are naming their dogs, their kids after you, you know, they named the dog food after you. And then, and then they all of a sudden were having the big festival, they got Loman Caesar bucks. I'm like, oh, whatever.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, we did have.
Yes, and I figured I was going to get fired for that, you know, that was one of the few times. However, in the spirit of everything, every emperor has. Well, hail Caesar.
Oh, yeah.
Remember the Caesar bucks, you know?
Just like, remember Caesar well, he died by the Senate, you know it.
Yeah, I know that, I know that.
Okay, this is, this is so you never lose your way home.
All right.
We can put it wherever we want it to.
Put this on the street.
You can, whatever you want it to. Woodrow's, you got to take that plastic off.
Yes, very good.
It's even in big letters so you can see it. It's been an honor and a pleasure.
Hey, thank you. It's been an honor and a pleasure, like I said, serving, serving the people of Beecher, I'll tell you. It's.
Hey, we're not done yet.
Jeff, tip off.
I think I'm going to miss your ballgame.
Yeah.
Well, my box is not as big as Buddy's. You always cut my budget the most. But as a testament to your 28 years of service, not only to the residents of Beecher, but the businesses of Beecher, the residents and businesses of Washington Township, the employees of Beecher, and also all the visitors that have come here. We took your village president badge and permanently encased it in acrylic for you to proudly display.
Yeah, just wonderful. Just wonderful.
They work good.
Can I use this to get out of tickets or anything? Not Jeanette, too.
We're almost done.
Huh? All right.
On behalf of the village board, I'd like to present you with these. And we want to thank you for your many years of dedication to the village. I get emotional because I've been here for a lot of time.
Yeah, we have, haven't we?
Your experience and knowledge will be greatly missed by everyone. You've always had a strong, you've been a strong, dedicated leader and have always served in the best interest of the residents of Beecher. And we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Still a lot of things to do now, haven't we?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I open this? My son from Michigan, you think, came down there? Holy Christ.
I don't think we're going to do basketball tonight.
Got my own gavel, huh? It's just like that one, you got one too, man.
I got one, yeah.
All right, all right. Thank you. All right, I gotta see what this is. Yeah, I know, I, I don't. I never get this many presents, even at Christmas, I'm like, damn. No, I don't want anything, I never, never, never. Now, we got to clean up after we're done. We did some trouble. Oh, my goodness, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Am I done after?
No, not yet. Oh, it's after tonight? Yeah.
Oh, that's for the other part, okay. I can use that, I can use that for. Oh, what can I use that?
What we want to do now is get a picture with you and your plaque with the current village board. Then we'll get everybody that has served with you to tag it up.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So just do that right here, so Landis, just step aside for a minute and be in the next picture.
I'll tell you what.
So you seven, first. Julie, where's Julie? Are all the board members here from the past? I don't, can't tell. See, did Bob Schmidt? All right, everybody gather up. We got a lot more festivities to go to yet.
What do you mean, we're going to adjourn pretty quick.
Oh, no.
Huh?
All right, get together, guys.
All right, come on.
This will be the last one.
Who? The last one, yep, 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 yep.
Jeanette wore my suit. Jeanette, you can stand in front here. All right.
Are you saying I'm short?
Yeah, you're short, yeah, yeah. You make it?
Make sure Zach gets his pictures there.
He did that all day yesterday.
Hurry up. When you're done.
Hurry up. Hurry up. Time's a-wastin'.
Now, anyone who's served with Paul on the village board that's here tonight, come forward. Everybody. This will be in a storage picture. Greg, you too. Everybody, everybody, everybody.
Hey, Joe Burner.
I want to do this just like you made me do before every board meeting.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah. Come on. What, you want everybody?
Yep, we're going to try and get everybody in. Might have to go two rows, so the shorter ones and the ladies in the back row. Landis, you're shorter.
Come on, boy.
There we go.
I'm short and wide.
There you go.
Can you make it?
I need a white one.
Paul, stop gooseing me.
Hey, hey, hey.
Just ask your wife what you were doing.
She said you're on here and I'll get out, you know?
When you're done.
Done, Zach?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, everybody that's here, grab a chair, back, sit, relax, and get comfortable. It's going to take a little while.
We're not done yet, Paul.
We're not done yet, Paul. That's basketball game? It'll be over by the time you get here. I don't know why we're down there. See, buddy, it's going to get long. It's okay here. I can sit there, watch the screen. See you later. First thing over, I was going. You thought you were going to watch basketball?
Yes.
Basketball is state, all it can do.
Ready? Look at me.
You got enough chairs?
I will bring your chair around here.
Okay. Ready, okay?
I got to get some too, for a while. I got to go on too.
Well, hurry up. I want to get the movie going.
All right, good.
Okay?
Grab a nice chair, take a run, proceed. Your life's gonna pass right there. Four please, chief.
That's right. Wonder Brown.
He was down once.
Yeah, I was. Is that you, Jeanette?
Yep.
First pushboard. Oh, what, agenda? Boy, remember that.
Looked pretty young there, Roger.
Boy, remember that. Hey, what? Who did that? Jeez. Those were the days, huh? Put this together.
You did over past three years.
Chuck, yeah, I remember that.
Did that char horse.
Is that char horse or that gal? Yeah, I remember that in front of group of Brett right there. Buddy, did you take these pictures home? Great. There's that old four. Remember that? Twelve three, save today. Down breaking? Springling back. Oh, that's a new one. We have that twelve three, that's Aldo.
Well, we have a, uh, Senator DeAndres and Representative Robert Field. They have to obtain, uh, three hundred five thousand grant money, which was stated before by Pastor DeAndrea. Robinson Engineering was very instrumental in us obtaining this grant. Through their efforts and, and Senator DeAndres, we were able to, to obtain these funds. Furthermore, we had the chance to upgrade our water system, uh, is one of the most modern systems around the area. I know there's, uh, other municipalities that would like to, have the same type of, uh, apparatus that we have. Kinda jealous, I would say.
You were just talking about that this morning, weren't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's Aldo.
Who, who's, who's, uh, yeah, I see Aldo, who's the woman?
That's Bob Field.
Oh, yeah, Bob Field on the right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, oh, on the left, yeah. That was Aldo on the right. Do you remember that? Yeah. Chris?
Oh, Ernie's seven.
Ernie, yeah.
Hi there, I'm Paul Owen, trustee of the village board for the past ten years. I've been the water and sewer committee chairman for the past ten years also. When I came on the board, the sewer plant was one of our main problem areas. And, uh, it has taken us ten years to address these issues. EPA has, uh, put many, uh, parameters on us that we cannot keep with our existing sewer plant. Uh, we have our over design capacity. So we went to, uh, address these issues with this proposal that we have in mind. And now, we feel we, we have enough growth potential here to serve, come with up to twenty twenty, twenty thirty, I would say, if Beecher doesn't grow that much. We feel we're getting the best, best bang for our dollar right, right there in this particular plant. And now, I would like to thank you for your time and going over this process with us. And we will have a short tape on the oxidation process by the manufacturer that, that processes the discs. And that will lead to a company.
First of all, I'd like to thank, uh, the village board for all the cooperation of the whole project. The ones who ran this one have done the best job. Uh, a very, very cooperative. Like to make no errors. Two or three percent of the force, answer our writers, their history, operation, and design. And any of this projects under way. I learned one thing about promising, you gotta get your feet wet before you go out into the water. And that's the thing I think to the boss, coming, uh, sewer board chairman.
Okay. Somebody grab a scoop? There we go. I got my feet wet. River City, yeah. It comes. Where is it? Spent time down there, didn't he? Who's the blind guy?
President of River City.
Uh, River State?
Jim?
Yeah? Wow, oh, you look young, bud. That's true, still is. New board rechanges. Who is that guy?
Do you know who he is?
Huh?
It's Mark Samuel.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Who is that?
Julie Ariel.
Hey, Mr. Old. That was Landis is doing.
So you inherited that property?
Ah, yeah, I do. Boy, that, that was the first year, they had some nice old man. Ain't that good? Brian, let's have more trees. Hey, we planted quite a few like that, so.
Unfortunately, they're all ash trees.
Yeah, yeah. We did, we planted a lot of trees. And all the residents that called in for trimming, doing the trim.
I can't help, we had two different... I can't either, I'm what, Floyd Man? And if I'm looking at the same list, we all have to do for a little bit. I can't help it then, you know what, we don't work, uh, eight hours a day, every day that we're trimming trees. It was just not enough fun. There's perks, again, you know, there's slices, we all have to balance.
I understand that, Kate. Do, do we have that list, Emma? Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I have it at home.
Do you have a copy of that list, buddy?
Yes, I do.
Could I have a copy of that list by the end of the week? Both of you, I wanna make sure it's the same list.
It should be right here, right in the blackboard.
Yeah, yeah, we have two. You did, we remember that, we teamed that, got the second one, we even went further after that.
We'll, we'll look into this list once, because I, I understand what you're saying with a certain resident, uh, that his tree hasn't been trimmed for two years.
Two years.
And I know they never got, got to that end of town, because they started on the west side and worked their way across. I'm just saying, I think there was a lot of trees that were trimmed that went on the list. And I guess, and that's what a problem is.
Right.
Do the list, then if you got time to do more, do more.
But I don't want promises coming out of the village hall and not, not, not delivering promises either, you know? I, I think that, that's ridiculous. That makes us all look bad.
Yeah.
If you're gonna say you're gonna do it, then you better make sure it gets done. I don't care. And I agree, don't have water, it's gotta get...
I agree with you, if, don't make promises.
If they got a list, we'll do, do the list first, and then if they got time, we'll get it.
He's Homer.
Boy, some of that old pictures, oh, we could, uh... Oh, that's the senior housing town, yeah.
And I think at that time, I don't know, there's a lot of new faces around here, but we did the same thing. I know you, you recall that workshop that we had with Chuck E. Consoler back in nineteen ninety-eight? And at that time, we had a lot of common bowls and common grounds. And, uh, I, I think we've achieved some of those, and some of those we probably fell short on. And maybe it's, uh, maybe it's my fault not having enough working relationship with the school board, uh, to find out some of their shortfalls. So at this time, uh, I think what we're going to do, first of all, I think we do have a lot of new faces. And maybe we don't even know each other, so we're gonna go around the room and, and introduce yourselves, so everybody knows who everybody is talking to. So I'm Paul Owen, village president, Rod.
Roger, I'm trustee.
Ed O'Eric, trustee.
Chris Peterson, trustee.
Debbie Manon, school board.
George O'Brien, superintendent teacher.
Thomas Luttrell, president.
Owen Perry, Department of Education.
Dean Jacobson, vice president.
Garum Kane, board member.
Rick Grimm, board of education.
Rob Coleman, trustee.
Ralph Coleman, Trustee.
Jim Raver, Trustee.
Janet Connor, Building Court.
Okay, I hope everybody knows each other.
It's our first morning.
Are we supposed to meet here tonight?
Yeah.
I didn't mean.
That was a little too, that's ten crazy. I was having governance on town, wasn't I? I still know that kind of, you know, we got, okay. A home, Lincoln, well, no, boy. All the guys I shake hands with are all prison. Don't let me shake your hand. And Joe. Bruce, right? Steve? Was that Bob on the right? Louis Phillips? Oh, yeah, that's right.
I think that guy's from Doc's, huh?
Huh?
That guy's from Doc's, right over here.
Oh, we got to grant, right?
Yeah.
It's with the, what?
Yeah. Swap operator of the year, yeah, Ron.
I think Bob should have been here, I think, yeah.
Governor's hometown.
Top line.
That's, that's, that's.
Hi, Joanne.
Look at Paul.
Yeah. Oh, that was a one, oh, man, that was rough. Larry Wolf. Ron Schrader. Caroline. Yeah? Oh, Chuck E. Consoler.
You got two of you.
Huh?
I got two of you.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Bob. Who's the guy with the beard there? That's Bob Howard. Did we hire that guy?
Yeah, I think.
Huh?
Yeah. That was a good hair day, huh, Sandy?
Oh, boy. Whatever. I guess when we were working on the float.
Bob, you look young here, you did some. Oh, man, you have that dirt.
Dancing, yeah.
Mike Kimick?
All good job.
Who says be a slow guy? Who's that guy?
Many cakes ago.
Huh? Man, man. Bruce?
It's Bob.
Yeah. Roger, the.
You and John and Billy, you just spoke a lot of sacred words.
Yeah. Oh, man. Who the hell is that puppy again? Uh, boy, I'm. That's a good one.
No blank.
Yeah, no blank, yeah. Hey, buddy.
Books?
Oh, no. Oh, no. No, he's already in that. No. That's why we don't all behave like that.
Oh, boy. Always give me out my best.
Bob and Rod.
What is that twenty-four dollar six pack?
Yeah, yeah. Bring home the depot, yeah. There's our board meeting, yeah? Boy, that thing was a mess, wasn't it? Jeez. That should have had a match to it, really.
Careful, Kenny's in the room.
I know. Should have had a match to it. Well, mine's laying big, this final stop, yeah. Yeah, our board meeting. That was, was that when Brock was in? No, I'm trying to think that same year, but. Oh, was that when you had that thing, huh, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It lasted about two years.
Yeah. Better done. Was that the Uster we traveled up that year? That was the one you were at? We have one of them, that was one year old, I think. You were at, I think. Jeez. Two thousand two, that one, though?
Yeah.
That's right, it is that year.
I said it was two hours long, I cut it to thirty-eight minutes.
Yeah, is that really? Great. Hey, there's Kitty Park. Yeah, that's. That's production. Yeah. Fixing, that's what they fixing, right, Jeff? No bite? Yeah, we used to have nine of them.
That's a girl, huh?
Hey, who's that guy on the right?
Like a brick.
Oh, a brick. He looks like a little kid, doesn't he? Huh? I remember that bit.
Bobby.
Yeah, well, Bill, I'll tell you. All the John group. Who's that guy?
No beard.
Who's that guy?
That's the president.
Yeah, yeah.
Mercy.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
There's.
Oh, boy. Yeah, I remember that. Oh, is that serious? You want to remember it? I had a spare single. The hard part is your cage on the way down. And while I was down watching, I could stand here and see you. So I came to the house and I did the check. He's there, he's in front, he's taking his head over, he's standing here in the middle. Then he kind of like, oh, yeah. He bites your ass. All right. One, two, three. Yeah, that's been one here.
I did not pick the music.
Should have had that at school, like.
You all came to see your State of the Village address, but you put it at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, that's funny. Hey, thank you, everybody. You, you, you people are great. Oh, really? This town wouldn't be what it is today without you. It's all people. It's gotta be. I appreciate all the cooperation, really. It's been a good twenty-eight years for me. I'm just glad you've let me be part of this, so. Like I said, uh, some of that stuff is boring, but it's about you. I know, I can't remember that far back once in a while, but. Oh, it was great, great.
Before we leave, we pursue the session, so we might call for a motion for a.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Salute. Sorry.
Thank you, a boring evening. I know there's more important things to be doing than sitting here. Ah, you're looking at me, yeah.
I have, I have made a half a dozen copies of that for you to give your grandkids and.